So let's call the meeting to order. We have a form. Thank you all for being here.
Yes.
Um, Mike and Paul, I know, are not coming, so...
He's in Germany.
Is he in Germany?
He was in Germany.
I knew he was out of town. Didn't know he was out of country.
He wasn't Lisbon, but he's far in Germany today.
Germany is...
What is your far?
Mike. And Paul emailed and said he couldn't make it as well. Sorry. What he said was, because of work, it's not looking good. So I expect he will not make it tonight. So let's go ahead. Um, everybody have an agenda? There's a pile of agendas here if anyone wants one.
Yeah, we got that.
We have additions or corrections?
I think I revised it, Emily compared to what people got out earlier last week, last weekend.
Okay.
So they get the... Anyway, the changes are that we have, after correspondence, a short report by...
Report by staff, okay.
Yeah.
Does everybody have that copy?
Yeah.
It got emailed actually just today. It was a revised agenda. There was one thing that popped up. So if you're all using the same agenda, we don't need to add anything to the agenda.
I think that was the only correction, except for time, yeah.
Does anyone else have anything to add to the agenda or correct the agenda? If not, the one that came up...
Just the winning Powerball number. You can find that in there somewhere. I'll share it. We could all go in.
Didn't know that was coming. Um, just make sure you all have the correct agenda because there was one that was sent just today that was up. And if you didn't, it's here.
Yeah, you can tell because it says revised at the top. You'll know if you got the right one. It says revised at the top.
Okay. So now that I have the correct one, members of the public, and we have a few people. We have Nancy Dyke from Wyndham. Nancy, come on up. Anything you want to...
Welcome.
Are you here to observe?
Welcome down the hill.
Thank you. We're thrilled to have you here. And if there's anything you want to add at any point, just let me know. Okay, thank you. And this is our staff, right? So, okay.
Well, it's nice for them. We'll introduce everybody when we get to you, all right? Then you can get to know who's here.
Which is actually coming up in just one second. Um, correspondence. I don't actually have any correspondence. You know, you gave me... And you have one. And I didn't look in the box either. It's so dark in there.
I'll pass these around both ways.
This is earlier.
This is a charming letter, really very charming, which you don't need to spend time with it right now. Written by hand by Shi Fang, one of the Chinese visitors. And I think it's so... It's very touching. We just take it home. No, no, it's a girl. She was staying with the... It was given to Tom Connor.
You are not an ordinary old man.
Yeah, it's pretty cute.
That's lovely.
Anyway, it's quite a little...
And that is true.
And, you know, it's certainly a memento and a tribute to our long relationship with China. And just typical of the kinds of communications, I think. I think, well, I mean, you're mentioning this letter too, right? Yeah.
How nice.
Anyway.
That's great. Thank you for making your coffee for everyone. That's great.
Yeah, I thought we could spare the tree. We could save... We could use a tree on that. And I do have later on, when you get to the residency hearing, I do have correspondence that would be appropriate to be reviewed at that point.
Okay. All right, if there's no other correspondence, we'll move on to report by staff.
Sure. So let's start. First, it's a great pleasure to introduce Mary Davis and Courtney Cron. Mary's on the left and Courtney on the right here, right?
We should introduce ourselves.
And granted, we should introduce ourselves, so we'll start with Bonnie. If you could tell them, you know, they may not know what town you're representing.
My name's Bonnie McGavey, and I'm from...
Dionne Newton from Wyndham.
Patty Dixon from Jamaica.
Jay Yorano from Uthain.
Bruce Parlam from Jamaica.
And I'm Frank Ruck, the financial officer.
I'm Joe Winrick. I'm from Townsboro.
Emily Long from Uthain.
And for the video, it's Stephen John, the superintendent.
I'm Durin Dorstl, principal.
And we have another board member approaching.
Oh, good. Even better.
It's Germany.
You get to introduce yourself right now since you're walking in the door late. To our staff members.
Hi.
And you could say, "The town you're from."
Jeremy Calloway. I'm from Uthain.
And Tara Myheart. She's our niece, whose mother was a former teacher here.
Sure. So Dr. Dorstman asked us to present on differentiating up in our classrooms. I'll just flip these and pass them both ways. In English and Science. So I teach eighth grade and 10th grade English, but I'm going to present on differentiating up in eighth grade English. And by differentiating up, I mean, what do I do in my classroom to reach and challenge higher level students while at the same time teaching the majority of students who are at grade level? And the first thing I'm going to show you is my syllabus. I'm only going to show you the first page. One of the things I think, I... To be honest, I don't know what exactly was on the eighth grade syllabus before I came, but from what I've been told, I've added books and have worked with the English department to choose books that raise the bar for our kids as a whole. So we start off the year with The Omnivore's Dilemma by Michael Pollan, which is a nonfiction text. And we teach that in conjunction with social studies. Then, actually, this year, we're moving on to Much Ado About Nothing, which is a Shakespearean play next. And then we'll do To Kill a Mockingbird, which will take almost a whole quarter because it's a dense, big book. And we also have a short story unit and a poetry unit. The other thing I wanted to show you that's on here is where it says grade level expectations. I put this on here, and I don't know how many parents who signed off on this read it, but it's more of a disclaimer that a student might be asked to work at a level that best suits them, which might be asking more of them than another student. So it says, "The standards for student learning and progress outlined in the syllabus adhere with grade level expectations. Students who are capable and ready to exceed grade level expectations will be expected to do so. Examples of such expectations include, but are not limited to, higher level reading selections, writing assignments heightened in complexity, or advanced vocabulary with which the student is not already familiar." So to show you an example of how I do that in my classroom, I just have a specific unit that we're working on, or lesson from the unit we're working on right now, which is Much Ado About Nothing. And first, I'll show you, this is the text we're using. And on the right-hand side, it's a Folgers edition. Every page has the original text or the Folgers edited original text. And then translations of some of the more difficult words on the left-hand side. And our special ed department, this is differentiating down, which I'm not going to talk a lot about, but our special ed department bought these books, No Fear Shakespeare, for some select students. And actually, not even for all of the specialized students, but a select few of them who needed even more support. And this has a word-for-word modern-day translation on every page. So they could read, if they wanted to, just the modern-day translation and still have access to Shakespeare's original language, but not have to read it. But that's not what I'm here to talk to you about. I'm not going to talk about that anymore. The most recent assignment we had was actually last week going into this week, analyzing Don John, the villain, or one of the villains of the play. So I'm going to show you, actually, you have it in front of you, two student paragraphs with the names removed. And I think what's important to note is that the final products look the same, which is the point of differentiated instruction, to get students to the same end goal or end mark. But the way I got these two different students there is where the differentiation came in. So in the beginning of the packet is the assignment, which was to, after reading Act One, Scene Three of Much Ado About Nothing, write a paragraph analyzing Don John's character. And these are all the things on this checklist that they have to include in this paragraph, which are essentially components from the SIMS paragraph diagram that we're using at Leland and Gray. And then, one of the requirements of our response to text, which is a Vermont state writing genre, is to include contextual information and cite it using MLA format because that's the format we use here at L G. So the first example in the packet is what I gave most of the students, and that is a brainstorming of three key quotes that Don John gives in his soliloquy about himself. And I asked students to look at these quotes and translate them. And even though it's just three boxes for, I would say, a majority of the eighth graders to translate, "I must be sad when I have cause and smile at no man's jests," is like a five-minute activity. So to fill this out, probably took this student about maybe 10 to 15 minutes. One of the quotes is harder than the other two. So then, having translated those quotes, he then filled out the paragraph diagram using the quotations that I had given him, that he translated as his follow-up sentences. And then he turned it into a paragraph using the format of the diagram. So just flipping from this paragraph to the one that I'll explain as differentiated up, this one's obviously a little bit longer, but they have the same components. They both include three quotes. They both have an analysis of each quote. And they both have all the components of the paragraph diagram. The difference is that for this student, I only gave her the paragraph diagram. So she didn't have the quotes already selected for her. And I said, "In Act One, Scene Three, there's actually two soliloquies by Don John. So analyze both of those and choose any quotes you want to support your reading of his character." And she ended up finding actually two of the same ones I gave the kids, but she didn't have knowledge of that because when I gave this assignment, I didn't say, "Some of you are getting this extra sheet." It's something that I walked around and gave students. And once they get into their writing, they're really oblivious of what anyone else is doing. So this student found her quotes. And if you see, her paragraph diagram actually says over. And I didn't photocopy the other side, but she went on to a lengthy writing brainstorm on the backside of what these quotes might mean on her own, even though I didn't even give her those boxes of what do you think these quotes mean. And then she turned it into this paragraph. So I think 10 students in the eighth grade were not given that brainstorm sheet that all the other students were given. And they went and found the quotes by themselves. And most of them chose at least one or two of the same quotes that I gave the kids. And some of them chose quotes I would never have thought to have picked for the assignment, but interpreted them correctly and supported their argument that Don John is a villain. So that's just one specific example of how you could differentiate up using writing in the English curriculum. And I would say, the reason I started with my syllabus is I think that by setting the bar high and then using the support classes to help kids for whom that bar might be too high, you might not be automatically differentiating up, but it's a big step in that direction just to have high expectations to begin with, I think.
Courtney, can you just explain your... You used the term MLA.
Uh huh. So MLA stands for Modern Language Association. And there's different formats for citing direct quotes. I know in Science, I think, there is APA or Chicago style a lot. And when kids get to college, they'll be expected, in their different subject areas, to know all of the different styles. But here in Leland and Gray, to make it more attainable for the kids, we all theoretically use MLA's style, which is in... Which the format is accessed from the website. And basically, right here where these citations are, this stands for Act One, Scene Three, lines 13 to 14. And if we were quoting from a variety of texts, they would also include the author's last name in these parentheses, and they would have a work cited list at the end. So MLA is just a way of citing your sources, as well as a format. Are there any other questions?
Do you want to say anything about the paragraph diagram? Because it might be new for others.
Well, the paragraph diagram is a SIM strategy that we're teaching school-wide. And I would say that I see great writing from the kids using this paragraph diagram. To have eighth graders, in my experience, incorporate quotes analyzing Shakespeare into a coherent paragraph like that is a really challenging activity. And because of the structure of the diagram, where all I had to say was, "One of your follow-up sentences is going to be a direct quote," they knew... I had to teach them how to incorporate a quote by putting their own words in front of it and how to cite it for a Shakespearean play. But other than that, they just knew what that meant. If I say to the eighth grade, "Use a paragraph diagram to write about X, Y, and Z," they'll say, "How many follow-ups per detail?" Or, "What are the minimum details?" they'll say. So they just know what all of that means, and they go get a diagram from the box and fill it out. And I think, I would feel confident in saying that any seventh, eighth, or ninth grader right now could do that pretty well. And I only say that because I don't teach a lot of the high school levels. I have a current 10th grade class that, because they haven't had, I think, as many years at Leland and Gray, but this is just my guess, they struggle with it a lot more than the eighth graders do.
That's impressive. Thank you.
All right.
Hey. I'm the eighth grade, one of the eighth grade science teachers. I teach the course, The Physical World. I'll divide these and pass these around. This is your simple lesson plan that I'm going to be talking about. And to start off, I just wanted to go over some of the physical world curriculum. The Physical World as a course is designed as a follow-up to the seventh grade course that focuses on life science. And it's designed to also prepare students for the kneecaps, but more importantly, provide them with the foundation that they need to move on to the high school science subjects, so that they have the basic concepts of science down and understanding that they need to perform well in their chemistry and physics course. So in the physical world, I've highlighted the areas that we focus on in our year. We start with, actually, we start with matter, move on to motion, energy, and then do unit on astronomy and geology. And the unit that I am sharing with you today is from the matter unit that we're currently in. And generally, this curriculum is outlined very thoroughly with the grade level expectations and standards that students are expected to maintain. You do not have this handout, sorry. So if you're looking for it, it's all up here. But I'll direct you to the handouts once we get to that point. So to study matter, there are three basic questions that we're expecting students will develop enduring knowledge from. Telling one substance from another, how we can do that. What happens when matter changes state? What makes up everything we see around us? And these are outlines for learning. And they provide really the skeleton for the curriculum. So there's a lot of room to build in and add on to enhance students' learning and get them up to the higher level if they're ready to do so. It will tell, this curriculum guides me to see that students should be able to demonstrate the difference between atoms and molecules, for example. But how I guide them to do that can bump them up to a higher level if they're prepared to reach that higher level. And it also enables me to, you know, provide the basic instruction that all the students are going to be able to meet with just their normal abilities. So in the example that I'm going to be sharing with you, it's an activity where students actually were following up on an investigation that they completed in a lab. So in this lab, students take a sample of ethanol, 50 milliliters of ethanol, and 50 milliliters of water, and they mix them together. And you would expect that the total volume would be 100 milliliters. But in this case, it's not. It actually comes out to around 96 milliliters fairly consistently and reliably. And four milliliters is actually quite a lot to go missing. So the students are tasked with a quest to figure out where those four missing milliliters went. They're guided through a variety of different steps to try and determine that. And in the process, they use models, and they're being introduced to the idea of atoms and molecules throughout this sequence of instruction. So some of the standards that are focused on in this follow-up activity then, and this is where I'm going to jump to the handouts that you have. If you look at where it says grade expectations, students are able to demonstrate their understanding of the properties of matter by illustrating through words or representations the differences between atoms and molecules. And students demonstrate their ability to explain data by using scientific concepts and, more importantly, models in this lesson, as well as terminology to report results, discuss relationships, and propose new explanations. So this is also the first time in the science curriculum that I introduced the idea of models for the class. They've worked with models before. They have a good understanding of what that is on a basic level. But when I introduce it, I begin by leading in with something that they're familiar with, such as a CPR mannequin, to illustrate the importance of models. And the ultimate goal of this lab is for them to take, actually, gumdrops and toothpicks and construct a model of both an ethanol molecule and a water molecule. And using those models, they can see how they actually fit together to create the reduced volume that is not expected. So they have a handout where they're guided through that process. And all students get this. So all students would start out with talking about the CPR mannequin as an introduction to models. All students would go through the process of building gumdrop models with toothpicks that would come out looking something like this, probably more two-dimensional. But these are examples of what is used by most scientists. So they build their gumdrop models. And through a little bit of guided instruction and just manipulation of their own models, they can see how the water molecules and the ethanol molecules kind of fit together. So it's almost like filling the spaces between marbles with BBs. And that's where the four missing milliliters go. Students who finish that early, it is a very hands-on activity. Most of the students are occupied for the vast majority of the time with this activity and the questions that they're instructed to complete as follow-up. But for those students who are completing this early and completing it well and thoroughly, I have a separate handout. And this is the thought experiments handout that you have in your packet. And in the thought experiments handout, they're asked to take their understanding of the concept that they've just learned, apply it to a new situation in the first question. So I tell them, "Okay, if you have a mixture of ethanol and water, suppose you take that, and then you add a caffeine solution. You mix caffeine molecules into it. What would that look like? What would you expect the total volume to be in that situation?" And as you can see from the diagram, the caffeine molecule is much larger than either the ethanol or the water. So you could expect perhaps even a lower volume at that point. And if students can answer that, that shows me that they're able to really take this concept and own it, to apply it to new situations and take it to the next level. In the second question that's on their sheet, students are asked to predict or make some hypotheses about what a solution would look like if you were to take water and add sugar molecules to it. And the sugar molecule is also a very large molecule. And this is guiding them beyond what the scope of the first... Beyond the scope of what the class was originally designed to teach, or as far as this lesson was designed to teach. And that is asking them to think about solutions and dissolving, which is a subject that we're only now beginning to talk about about two weeks later. So the students who were able to proceed and complete first activity thoroughly were able to move on and actually project this understanding into what is being learned two weeks later for the whole rest of the class and really gain a better understanding of the process of solution. This activity was given to probably two or three students in the class because the activity was rather time-consuming for all the students. But some did successfully complete it and were able to make some efforts on this. And it was collected and graded as points added on to the initial total of the assignment. So it was expected of the students that if they were able to get to this point, that they would put some significant effort into completing this well and thoroughly. So that's one example of differentiating up in science, many ways to do it, but that's just one. Any questions?
Just all stunned.
A little bit. Thank you. Really, we're not an increase.
Do the students that are given advanced or given the UP material, are they excited about that? Do they not want to do the work?
Generally, they're looking for more things to do. So they're excited to have something that will challenge them a little more. They're looking for that additional, kind of, almost like a brain teaser. Like, here's the Sudoku that you can do to challenge yourself. See if you can get this. So I think it's a challenge that most of them appreciate and enjoy taking on.
That's great. It puts a really positive perspective on learning. All right, questions?
No, I just want to compliment the staff and Durin's instructional leadership to make this all possible.
As do we.
We appreciate your commitment to Leland and Gray, and we hope you stay with us a long time.
And we echo the same thing. And we hope you'll come back as well. Because this is great. This is something that we don't always get at school board meetings, but something we should be doing at school board meetings. And I appreciate that. And thank you, Durin, also for giving us this opportunity.
I understand Mary has to get off to other class, but we're going to let her go, right? Yeah?
That's right. Thank you.
Unless you guys need the Elmo, I would like to bring that back.
Take it away.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
If I could just add that, if it's not the first, it's the second school board goal to challenge our students by readiness, not age. And this has been a challenge for us at Leland and Gray and has led to the acceleration in subjects in addition to math, which has been done for quite a few years, far preceding me. And so we have discussed at length, since that goal was adopted in September 2011, of how we were going to do that in our courses. And so since Courtney and Mary have come to Leland and Gray, they've heard about this frequently. And I've challenged them as part of the supervision evaluation process in reviewing their lesson plans and for formal observations of how are we differentiating up? And what are the things that you look for in your students to know when they're ready, whether it's through a formal assessment or simply by their behaviors in class, which will indicate if they're ready for additional challenge? And the result has been what you see tonight, and leading us to consider even more whether it is advantageous to continue to accelerate students in class outside of math. So last year, we had six students accelerate in science and English, so last spring. And the question is in front of us, will there be any more this year? And I have told them until... I'm convinced that, and that in the sense that they can demonstrate to me that they will more than adequately challenge the students who are ready, then they can remain in their class. And when students who are at a high... You know, ready for above-grade level expectations remain in class, they raise the middle of the class through their modeling, through their contributions, through their partnering, through their classroom leadership, through their reteaching to other students, which in a sense deepens their own, I won't say in a sense which, really deepens their own learning like you would find in any tutoring situation or teaching situation. And I think we're getting much closer to reaching this point than at any other time I've been here.
That's great. Very good.
Thank you for being an audience. Thank you for being an audience to this.
A pleasure.
A pleasure, for sure. Okay, any other questions for Durin? No? We'll actually move on to your book.
Now, I did not email Durin's report and materials till today. Wasn't entirely that I was late, I didn't quite have it, but we, I was very busy today. So I apologize for getting it printed out by hard copy. So if you want to take it and review it now, please do. And my apologies for the late arrival. You can take one at a time.
And there is a second page that belongs to her.
Is this going on in all, in just the middle school level course, science and English? This sort of accelerated differentiated learning, or even?
Well, differentiation is what we saw them do now. So, multiple levels in one class. So acceleration would be those kids are out of the class and moved up the grade level.
So that's just occurred, differentiated learning is just occurring? Where is that occurring? Ideally, in all the classes, or is where is it? We just saw an example of eighth grade, but I'm just curious, are you?
We saw an example, eighth grade, English and science. I would say that instructional differentiation happens in math courses in terms of instructional strategies, but not necessarily at different skill levels because they're tracked. So by ninth grade, the students are usually in three different levels.
Okay, all right.
So what remains then likely is social studies. And that's something I continue to work on with those teachers. We haven't had, we didn't have any requests last year for students to be accelerated out of social studies, for whatever reason. So that had been less of a place of emphasis, but generally, it is an expectation of all teachers. In just the other core academic area being foreign language, I would say it's already a high level. I have requested that the fourth year of French and Spanish be advanced placement, just like it is for Chinese. And that will be a two-year process to attain for the faculty to get the credentials and also to revise the curriculum to bring the more advanced levels of learning down earlier. Because before, they were doing it in five levels. Students would get to French or Spanish five if they could fit it in their schedule. So that is a logistical reason, as much as a pedagogical reason for having the curriculum being AP, because we don't think we can, you know, if we have sixteen semesters during the course of a student's high school career, well, now we're even, it's even easier because it's not sixteen, it's twenty-four semesters, because foreign language starts in middle school. We want to get all, we want to get all four years or all four courses in. So, I know it sort of expands the answer to your question, but I felt that these two teachers had, in their courses, achieved a level of differentiating up, that there was less need for accelerating those students out when that has negative consequences for them and potentially, sorry, not for them, for the remainder of the class, including the teacher. Because suddenly, you know, six students who you have been working with for a semester are no longer a part of your class, but also for them. I have, in working with the newly created curriculum council, and I promise I won't dwell on this too long, I just look so tired, I'm sorry. I just had a cup of coffee.
Uh-oh.
So I knew I'd be talking about the budget. In the curriculum council, we just looked at six pages of data on the acceleration practices we've had over the last two years, and included a focus group with the accelerated students, as well as a discussion with teachers, interviews with parents, and the actual data around that, how many students were accelerated, as well as the research behind that. So, what we found is really what I'm trying to share with you tonight. If we can demonstrate that we can differentiate up in the classroom, then there is not a need for acceleration. Okay, so, part of the reason why this report was late is because I have been even very busy for me with the school community restoration, which is the first item listed here. Melanie Zwolinski, the Director of Student Services, and I have been very fortunate for the federal government to provide the resource of a statewide expert on substance abuse and grief counseling. Her name is Debbie Haskins, and they're paying for her to spend four days with us. And while I can't spend the whole day, four days with her, I, she actually lives near me in northern Vermont, so we got together for two and a half hours and we, and I, and when she's here, I do make meeting time with her. We've also had two WCSU crisis team meetings, all in response to the suicide that took place on September twenty-ninth. There has been an increase of the, I wouldn't say of discipline referrals, but there is an increase of the severity of specific referrals, individual referrals. The death unfortunately has exacerbated symptoms that have been probably part of any high school, but for some students, perhaps the parameters were here, they're now out here. And of course, a very high, very substantial increase of referrals to the counseling department. And thus, we have felt that we need to have a comprehensive response to what the federal government calls community restoration. It won't fund anything to do with prevention, that was sort of before the incident. But if you had a major crisis happen in your school that has so disrupted the school, the learning environment, then there is something called a SERVE grant that they invited us to apply for. And so that's still in the application process. After I sent in the information, I got an email back immediately that our contact with the Department of Education had a rush to New York City because his house was flooded there, as well as the woman in Washington DC saying we are, our hands are full with Sandy relief efforts. Give me some more time, because I had been speaking with both of them on an average of twice a week about our community needs and what the federal government can do to help. So we've been greatly supported in putting this plan together. Right now, it's about three or four pages long, and it's a chart where it says, I mean, on top here, you see the different constituencies whose needs we're working towards addressing. And it's a long-term plan. The SERVE grant is basically from the time of, we receive it for a six-month period, and we're looking out actually through the summer. And whether we get the grant or not, but in terms of response, why are we looking through the summer is because that's a time that the most part, the middle school program seek, notwithstanding, there's no, nothing going on for kids, and it's a very high-risk time for many of them. So in addition, so if we could just bring your attention to number two, the first number two on this page, which says, "Providing a much sought-after training resilient strategies for educators, techniques for self-care and peer support training." This, this basically grant opportunity that I applied for was awarded. Two experts are flying in, I think from California, and they were going to lead this training for twenty, for twenty-five to fifty educators, crisis responders, mental health care professionals, who we have invited, taking place at the Grafton Inn on December sixth, to help us in the aftermath of the tragedy. So we're very excited to be able to provide this for our community. And then it goes on to say what we are doing at, with, how the state level is helping us with the employee assistance program, and then at the local level, having, developing the MOA with the, with HCRS around expectations and procedures on crisis response and the possibility of placing a school-based clinician, who would be an HCRS employee, but housed at Leland and Gray to provide services. Collaborating with the Center for Health and Learning for a parenting class, guiding good choices. I'm working with Grace Cottage in terms of how we can collaborate further, especially for exploring other federal grants, and I'll use this word because opportunity is possible through Obamacare, now that that's like politically correct to call it that. Big fun for stickers, I love Obamacare. And I am looking forward to meeting with someone, a representative from, I guess they call it SEVCA, Southeast at Vermont Community Action, to bring a resource counselor to our area, because they, they don't, they have an office in Westminster or Brattleboro, but from, I'm not aware that their services, although they cover our region, actually reach the people in our region. We need to reach the people in our region. There's a lot of education that we need to do, that we have uncovered, as we have learned more about the factors leading to the suicide of our student. Any questions about this?
No, I just want to thank you for your initiative on the issue.
Thank you for your support.
I know Durin and I talk a lot on the weekends.
So next part is describing our most recent teacher in service. Unfortunately, it's likely to be our last for the school year. They're kind of front-loaded through November with two days before school, a day in September, and then a half-day in November. And once in a while, we have a day or two at the end of the school year, depending on the snow days. We had that for the last two years. And it was led entirely by our English department and an art teacher. And I was very proud of the efforts that they made around literacy and differentiating instruction. So the details are all in that. If I can just move on to the peer tutoring center. So I have also distributed the description. It's to answer the need that we, for, the first two years, there was no, nothing in the budget for a study hall position, monitor, but we needed to have study halls because we couldn't fill every student's schedule. So there was always a need for, you know, whether it was five students or twenty-five students who didn't have a class during the day. And we had found, with Frank's help, other places that, you know, were, that we could take funding from to support a person in this position. I still didn't like it though. Still didn't like having study halls. So this summer, through dialogue with Melanie and others, we were able to put together the concept of the peer tutoring center. And in all honesty, the only reason why we felt we could do it was because we had two very highly effective tutors in our building to do, who were already employed by us. They, one, she's a part-time administrative assistant and part-time tutor. The other is our Twenty-First Century Site Coordinator. But they understood the vision, the purpose, and had, would have, but I'll even boldly say, the tenacity to get kids to tutor each other, which is no easy task. And so I wanted to share with you today the results from the first quarter, which is, so it's quite a large number of our students are participating. So if you look at the bottom of the second page, no, third, no, second page of the handout, it's a hundred and thirty-eight students who are either signed up because they have the space in their schedule, or they choose to attend. Keep in mind that if a student doesn't qualify for a free pass, but he has a free block, that would be a junior or a senior, we have to put him somewhere, or her somewhere, in a supervised environment like the PTC. So it wasn't just, oh, we can't fit the schedules, but very often, a junior, senior will have up to one block available, without a class, and usually just in one semester, and we have to make sure they're supervised. So you can see the participation by grade level. I do not anticipate the seventh graders being in those high numbers again. That would be, it's usually a period every other day that they're assigned to the PTC, and those would be students who chose not to be in music, band or chorus that is, who, and do not need academic support in math or English. So if they fall into that category, they're very likely to have a space in their schedule to be in the PTC. And so it lists a range, full range of subject areas in which tutoring is taking place. Most common is math, and not every student is involved with peer tutoring. Some choose to use it as a study hall, but it is required to be a productive time. So that, like how it's listed at the end, other valuable activities taking place during that time, other things that students have found to do, which is monitored by the staff assigned to it during that time. So right now, we actually have, there's three different people who staff the PTC. And I intend to put this, I mean, part of the budget plan includes this actual position. So in a sense, it does look like new money, because we never allocated it before, but the fact is, for the, this is my third year, so for all three years, we've had to find money for a study hall monitor. And finally, this year, I feel we got it right, that it's actually, I can write a rationale why this is important, and it has helped shift the culture in the school. I didn't add to my report, but I'll tell you, anecdotally, the Twenty-First Century Grant allowed for Hay Help to be expanded to Monday through Thursday after school in the library, and it also expanded from seven fifteen to seven forty-five in the morning all five days of the week. And it's growing. I mean, a lot of, a lot of kids are coming, and I think as their classes are getting harder and more students are accepting the challenge, they are going, they're showing up and they want help. And it's, that happened, you know, here's a school day, and there's the before-school time and the after-school time, and they have developed its own culture. And the teachers, I would say, have watched with great appreciation to see the wide variety of students, students we wouldn't have expected to show up, coming in for help. You know, need access to the internet, need help from the tutor, or tutors who are available. Sometimes they'll meet their teachers here, in the afternoon, there's a snack. And I can't remember if those are snack in the morning. Anyway, that, that culture that grew in this is what made the PTC possible, because it's essentially an extension of that culture. So on the other sheet, it has, it's the concept paper that I put together back in August, so when I met with the two women who lead the staffing of it. There's a parent educator who fills two blocks a day as well, for that, for it all to literally be on the same page of what the PTC is and what isn't, what's allowable for students to do and what I don't want to hear is happening there. And this was shared with the faculty, and I, and because we've had this, this is our second year of the Twenty-First Century Grant, we've had that track record last year of this growing participation in Hay Help, you know, from seven all the way to grade twelve has paved the way for this to happen.
We've come a long way.
Quick question.
Yes, please.
And it sort of goes along with this. Have you noticed a change in the culture of the parents and their involvement, their interest in their kids' education, or more parent, has there been a parent-teacher conference? I'm sorry, I'm kind of low here. And do you notice more parents coming, or that kind of change yet? Maybe it'll be for...
That's a hard thing to study. The interest among parents for the seventh and eighth grade teachers is so high that I actually had to pay the middle school teachers extra to, because the parent-teacher conferences are like from three-thirty to seven-thirty, the students leave at eleven, and the teachers have this big break in the afternoon, or the, start early afternoon, because their day is going to go so late. Well, the seventh and eighth grade core teachers, I had to pay them to start at noon. So they didn't have a break from noon to, they had a half-hour dinner break and then went through to seven-thirty. So that has been... So, that has been very high. I would, and the freshmen and sophomores, it's also for the core subject areas, it's, they're busy. As the students get older, much less so, and some of the parents that have, have, you know, one, I mean, and this becomes just sort of anecdotal, very qualitative, a teacher showed to me an email from a parent that said, "I've been in communication with you, my student's doing really well, my student's a senior, do I really need to come in? Is there really something you need to tell me?" And so, the parent chose not to come.
Yeah.
So, I, I have no, I've never had trouble finding highly engaged parents when they're sitting in my office, or when they're working with the counselors, bringing them there. I mean, I don't, we're not, I have not seen the ones who don't show up, so it's very hard to study. We have talked about doing a parent survey. That, again, is really tough, because what's the cast? You know, you cast the net, and who do you get? Is it really the full representation of our 44% of families whose students are eligible for free and reduced meals? So, it's become an easier conversation, because our expectations are much clearer and much more consistent across the subject areas and the grade levels. So, when we talk about Hay Help, and having the after-school bus at 4:30, there's no excuse anymore.
Other questions or comments?
Do the students get any merits for tutoring the younger ones?
Yes. So, the staff person supervising the block has them, this, when students come in, they, they, go down, there's a computer that they type into what they're working on that period, and then the staff member monitors to make sure it's actually what's happening. And if they meet a minimum number of hours per week, I don't know if that's listed here. I think that was something I had them set, so I don't know. Either to be, to be a tutor or to be tutored, then they can earn half a credit, elective credit, but it's, it's half of the hour. So, for middle-school, there's no, there's no credit system anyway, except for if they're taking high-school-level foreign language or math. But let's say a student has a period for the school year, that would normally be one credit, but they wouldn't, in peer tutoring, if they were really active, you know, that's the minimum number for being tutored, or tutoring, or both, then they could earn up to half a credit, elective credit.
Questions?
You're welcome.
Great, and it's good to hear about this going on.
Anybody want to take the book?
Not does anyone want to, someone has to. Looking very nuts.
Great, okay, so, try to move along here a little bit. The, yeah, I sent out my superintendent's report quite a while back. If anybody want a hard copy, here they are, available. I think we've got them over there. You got one, Nancy? Did I get one to you? Yeah. Was for the month, superintendent's? No?
Anyone else?
Maybe I already started, read it, my hard copy. Electronically.
Send it out a week or two.
Yeah, it was November 1st or so. Yeah. So, you know, do let me know when you compare that with previous communications, what you might still find missing or something, but I, it does, it is, it is an effort to be more efficient. I have, I have another piece of paper I'll pass on that you need to spend time on tonight, but it's for your information, and it has to do with a report on the amount of money collected in fees, student fees, from people in the Laffer Program. That's the 21C after-school program. This was in response to inquiry from a member of the public, former board member of Dover, who was concerned that the money we were collecting for the after-school program was in fact going to the school, not going to the WCSU, because, you know, the program is a, a S U-wide, except for Wyndham program. So, this tells you the money that's collected in fees, and as you note at the bottom, it's entirely voluntary. This does begin to lay the groundwork for the local support that has to come to continue our obligations with the grants over the five years. You'll notice Leland and Gray is pretty minimal. This is actually expected at the middle-school, high-school level statewide. Students, what happens, most students, they say, "Well, yeah, well, I'd like to do that, but I'm not willing to spend the money my parent would give me to go to the movies," you know, so there's a deal going on there with the kids, other recreational purposes. So, this is not something to be alarmed about, this is in fact pretty normal. But you do represent other towns, part of the Union School District, so I thought that information, by way of background, is interesting, and we'll have to revisit these issues in future budgets. You can see a relationship between the, you know, percentage of free and reduced and the amount of money. I do have, you know, the numbers of students who are participating, and the percentages in each schools and so forth, that sort of detail has to be in the, in the grant report, but I just gave you this piece for now.
That's gone up, hasn't it, free and reduced?
Oh, yes, yeah. Our free and reduced...
That's quite a chance we've gone up both across the board. I'm not talking about us, I'm talking about...
Yeah, let's see. I think, in fact, one of them is now, in the latest data, I think Wardsborough may be over 60% or something. There's one of the schools, maybe it's Jamaica.
That's great, we're doing, we're getting some revenue to start that ball rolling.
Yeah.
So that...
Yeah, but it's struggling to see...
Well, it underscores on two ends of the, what do you call it, the recognition by the public and the parents that this is a valuable service, opportunity for their children, and that, on the other hand, it also underscores, as you can see from the data, the importance of the, the need that's out there in terms of our nutrition and after-school activities based on the financial scene at home. On another note, I have here a report from the Career Center, I went to the Career Center meeting today, and so, this has, gives you a big picture of the number of students, I'll pass them around here, I'm just giving this to Jake because he deserves a special packet with the other information. So, this, this gives you an idea of, you know, region that the Career Center serves, and the number of students that come from your various towns. And just to summarize, Leland and Gray has 17 students, including three from Wardsborough, that are attending the Career Center this first semester, and compare that, there's seven from Twin Valley and the three from Bellas Falls, and the total from the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union is 23. The difference between the two columns is that the first column is actually what they call an FTE, that's the, the actual number of minutes of the day or hours of the day compared to a full day that the student's attending. So, if you looked at Townsend, for example, it's, they're two students, and their credit is 1.06, that means each of them is attending about half a day. And that has to do with their federal funding and accounting for their student enrollment. There are a lot of these kind of enrollment reports that are going around at this time of year.
So, does that mean they come back here at the end of the day?
Yeah, possibly, although, most of the time, our students are going there and coming back at 1:30 or so, they get on the bus at 1:30. In fact, I met some of them, they greeted me when I left the meeting today, and then they get back here around the dismissal time, maybe it's 2:00 now. But when we, if we shift our start of day, we may be more coordinated. But the distant, the distant transportation issue is an obstacle over time, and actually, one of the goals of the, of the future for the Career Centers is to see what they can put on, online to support asynchronous learning. That's certainly an issue of the future. So, that meeting happens monthly, the next one's in December, they did move the date, Jake, it's to, did I write it down here? Yeah, December 3rd.
This is the next meeting?
Next meeting, December 3rd. Originally it was scheduled for the 10th, but it's the 3rd. Okay. I do have their budget, their budget's up 4.8% for next year. They're adding a program, and that has to do with a few paras they're adding to programs, like culinary is very well subscribed, and dance, they're doing something special with dance, trying to engage people who are normally not inclined to be in the dance field. They don't come from the dance studios, they come from acting or other, other areas of interest. And there was also a reduction because a film editing class was not going to be given, and there was, there's an EMT first responder strand of thing added to the protective services, law enforcement, and firefighters. And I think that's it for the changes in terms of what they're, what they're doing. Food, culinary went up from 30 to 75 students. Big, big interest item. And they are advertising, they've increased their budget by $7,000 to a total of $15,000 to advertise.
Wow.
I have no idea what's happening out there in the competitive world of trying to maintain enrollment. So, any question? I call your attention to the budget cycle for the WCSU that's listed in terms of the meetings on my report. The meeting, the next meeting of importance for the WCSU budget will be December, November 27th, the Tuesday. It will be here, that's intended to be a discussion among all the boards about the merits of those superintendents' budget proposals. That includes the grants, includes special education, allocation, includes the itinerant, the teachers that are shared among schools. So, is anything out yet, Frank? Was that about it?
Well, the 27th, we don't usually vote on the itinerant.
You're not voting on it?
It's usually the assess budget.
All right, it's assess budget. Anyway, people, all the boards are curious about the assessment, you'll see it appearing here in a, in a pretty accurate way in the budget you have tonight. But the idea was, the boards wanted to discuss and debate the merits of the, of the budget before the meeting on December 5th, at which they're obliged to make a decision.
Which is why we haven't had to move our...
Why we had to move our meeting to the 4th, right?
You all got that email, I hope, so the meeting moved from the 27th to December 4th.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then you're trying to meet again on the 11th, on the 11th.
Well, that's our regular date.
Yeah, regular, yeah. Okay, and then I call your...
This is the one we throw in extra for, you know, opening the budget up for things.
Yeah, yeah. And then the Red Committee is going to meet on the 28th. That will be an interesting meeting, there'll be a report about that later on, that sort of. Thank you.
Great.
Any questions for Stephen?
Frank, do you remember how many exactly Leland and Gray students went to the Career Center last year? I think it was around 22, 24?
I think that's, that typically has been that amount for a number of years, yeah, around, around 22 to 24.
And I think the first year I was here was 28, three years ago, and this year it's 17 or 18?
Well, you can't, this is first semester.
That's a good question.
So, they, what they do is they count students by, you know, semester, so you could have, you could have different students or more students. I think the number that we have, I don't know whether 17 is going to continue, is what I'm saying. You can't count them. And 17 is including the Wardsborough students.
Correct.
The three Wardsborough students who are not under the same jurisdiction.
Okay.
Stephen?
Yeah. The WCSU meeting, the budget action, can you report, it's December 5th, on the bottom of our agenda, it's December 12th, I just want to make sure which date it is.
On the bottom of your agenda, it's 12?
The bottom of the revised agenda.
Well, that's erroneous on the bottom of this agenda.
Which one is correct?
No, that's, that's erroneous, that should be the, the 5th.
December 5th.
Okay, so everybody look on the agenda that they have in front that says revised, wasn't revised enough, apparently. It should be Wednesday, the 5th. Does that make sense? Yeah, does that add up?
Yes, it's right.
Because the 4th is a Tuesday. Yeah, Wednesday.
We couldn't do the second Wednesday, I don't know. Like, we can't ever do...
So, which meeting is now the 5th?
It's the WCSU.
It's the WCSU board meeting, and what I tried to make clear there, although the 27th, it says, you know, the WCSU board, and it's on the budget, it kind of looks like it's at the Leland and Gray budget, but that's the location of the meeting, it's not the Leland and Gray budget, okay? And then on the last, last line, instead of the 12th, it's the 5th, is when the WCSU board intended originally, back last March, when we put these dates down, to vote on the superintendent's budget, so-called superintendent's budget. Good catch, Jim. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. You're right.
Got it.
Thank you. All right, all right, I'll get that corrected and posted.
All right, so anything else?
I think that's about it.
Frank, is your, your report, tonight?
I was, I was going to defer to the budget.
Okay.
Along the chief financial officer's line, though, I do, I'll try to proceed to make sure you get paid, as board members, should happen before the end of the year.
I know you're all sitting on the edge of your seats.
I know you were waiting to have that check, but...
Big plans for it.
We don't.
It's like, this is the first time anyone's ever mentioned that.
I thought I'd just make some points with you, I'm sorry.
We usually just happily pick up our check.
Yeah, well, it came up at Townsend last night, so I'm all charged up.
My Maserati came in.
It's a matchbox, Maserati.
So, we're on you again.
Red, yeah. Now, I did have, I did have something here that you don't need to pay attention to now, I don't think it's merits to discuss at this point, I just wanted to be a point of information. You got it, I think you got it at the Wyndham Board Meeting about three articles. So, this is an effort to move the conversation along, at least try to address, as in all political decisions around government and governance, there's a, there's room, there should be room for compromise or adjustment to meet specific needs of members of the community represented or governed. And so, in response to Wyndham School Board's position, these three articles are offered to allay the concerns of former community or any other small community about the power or tyranny of the larger or other people outside the town. This is actually, I give a little history in here, in the paper, but, you know, I'm just pointing out that there's been a long tradition in the United States of trying to balance the interest of the small and the large, the rich and the poor, the populous and the, or sparsely populated in our governance. And I think that that actually is represented across our S U, similar situation, so. Anyway, your comments are welcome, that we'll probably present it in a different form, not by me, but by our consultant, has articles to consider at the Red Committee on the 28th of November.
You're all invited.
You really plan things right, you can spend just about every day after Thanksgiving at some meeting.
Or if you plan things wrong.
And you'll get to see me even more.
All right.
Thank you, I think we even wanted to...
And the joint WCSU, WSU Study Committee, that's sort of on hold right now?
Uh, yeah, you don't have any news on it.
No, there's no news on that, because, of course, we're a country. I did send that email to all of you, I hope you all got it today, about Rich Warner's daughter, very horrible situation.
Seriously.
But I did get an email from him just before I locked out the door, and, yeah, she was in surgery for nine hours, I think, today, and that's like the third round of surgery.
She was hit by a car?
She got hit by a car as a pedestrian walking the street. She and another, Amy Warner, she and another person were hit, and the other person was killed. The driver was badly, well, the driver was injured, I think, they were children in that car, this is in London, so Rich and Regina just jumped a plane and went over there, and they've been over there ever since, trying to, today was the first time they were actually able to, it happened Saturday, today was the first time they were actually able to get physically near her. They've got her in a medically induced coma, and they're, he actually sent it quite upbeat, though, I will say, in the email tonight, that, you know, he said, "This is the first time that things actually seem like they're looking up," and that it's a wait-and-see sort of thing, but it's absolutely tragic. She was over there for credit school, and just walked in home, and right near where she lived, was that just a terrible tragedy. So, anyway, Rich is on that committee. So, anyway, Rich is on that committee, so we're going to hold off a little bit on any meeting, I'm certain that will...
He was here last week, I heard, Ally Haskins. Talked to her.
Yeah, yeah, it's really... Make sure you're alive.
Life continues in a second.
In a second. And enjoy every day. True. Okay.
That's a great segue into the budget.
Yeah, but this is budget. I'm going to go right to you guys. I'm going right to you, Frank.
Well, pass the document around.
While you're giving, while you're reporting?
Well, I will...
All of you are?
Yeah, we'll give you a little perspective. You may, you will, I hope you expect, I hope you live up to my expectations. Get the WCSU budget by email, by Friday, we hope. Yeah, so, obviously, okay. Obviously, this is challenging times, and, I guess I can get a copy myself, but I'll get it.
We have a budget that has a budget down.
And I, there's only been one budget prevented prior to this, and that was Townsend last night. I will share with you, just give a little perspective. Townsend's budget, the board there wanted to keep, maintain the same staffing and wanted to see how things turned out, and it was an eleven point eight percent increase. So, the administration has some more work to do on that. But that, that board is a strong advocate for maintaining, living up to the expectations of the community that they're competing to be one teacher for each grade. So, it would be interesting to see what happens when they see the tax impact of eleven point eight percent increase in expenditures. But that is, you know, that's all, that's all I know for sure, going around the various budgets. But by the next time we meet, certainly all the...
So, they don't go multi-grade classrooms? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Wow.
That's been the tradition of Townsend for...
Makes me think of that Ken Robinson video.
Well, yeah.
Sir Ken Robinson video about...
Well, anyway, so, anyway, take it away, Frank, if you'd like to. Just the highlights here, I know you and Durin have been working on it today while I was elsewhere.
Okay, so I'll, I'll give you a little bit of context and then Durin will give us a little more background on a, on a general rationale for some of the program changes. So, you see that this proposal is, in terms of expenditures, up three point eight percent from the current budget. And I'll just remind you that last year, our budget was up three and a half percent. Prior year before that, it was zero percent, and the year before that, it was down a half a percent. So, when we put that in the context of inflation, fiscal year eleven, the CPI statistics have been out for a while, three point two percent. Our budget was down a half a percent. And then fiscal year twelve, our budget was zero, and the CPI, you know, hasn't been published yet. Fiscal year twelve, still got a month and a half to go, but I think projections are we're around two percent. And then last year, as I say, which is the current operating year, three and a half percent, and this one is three point eight. So, there's a, there's a little context for you in terms of where, where we have been. And I, I mention that because there are a number of support areas for instruction that we have been level funding for a while. This budget includes about forty-eight thousand dollars of additional supplies, textbooks, and equipment items for instruction that have been, you know, have been deferred. So, you will see those in the line items within the instructional budget. The other thing to point out on that first page, you see that in the middle of the page where it says subtotal instruction, up a hundred and ninety thousand, and that is out of the two forty-eight, the total budget increase of two forty-eight. So, that, that's about three quarters of the total increase, and direct instruction is, is about two-thirds of the total budget. So, that's proportionally, most of the increases are in instruction. And then one other, just point of reference for you, that column on the far right, if you wanted to know what makes up the three point eight percent, you could add those, those numbers. That's a percent increase, and so certainly when Stephen and I and Durin are reviewing the budget, that we're very mindful of that. Or another way to say it is subtotal instruction, you see, I was saying we're up a hundred and ninety thousand, and that, that represents two point nine percent of the three point eight, okay?
That's a good, that's handy, has that.
And again, that's, that's about a three-quarter ratio of the total. So, you, you can also see the, you know, the larger single items, single items in terms of departments that, that have had an impact on this year's proposal. Many of them, you can see, are, are very similar, right? The point one percent, you know, a lot of point one percents that add up to the three point eight percent total. On the second page, Durin, Durin will give you highlights of, you know, why are we up, for example, in social studies, forty-seven thousand, and why are we up in mathematics, thirty-one thousand, and why are we down in science? So, Durin has background on that, but before, before I further, Durin, on that, I just mentioned on the second page, it's a summary document, again, represents, on one page, the total budget proposal consolidated at the six million eight hundred thousand. But it's in the format of what we call the, the state or mock terms as the objects. The first page is the functions, you know, what kind of programs do we run? The second page is organized just by what are we buying? There's, there's salary benefits are the largest items, and then there's the various services, equipment, transportation, and so on. I, I have included the assumption around the tentative agreement for compensation, and I have included a verbal estimate from the Vermont School Board's insurance trust of a potential ten percent increase in health insurance costs, which is somewhat unprecedented in the last several years. We've been accustomed to three percent increases, so. They have not officially announced the rates yet, but that's a verbal estimate from the directive of the program. The revenues, I have taken a preliminary look at. It's too early to talk about tax rates because average daily membership or student enrollment is reported to the DOE about now. They assign weights for poverty and for various elements of the funding formula, and then they send those numbers back to us, and those are the numbers we use for the tax rate calculation. But, so I haven't addressed that yet, but I have addressed some of the revenue assumptions. The largest one, of course, is the nine hundred forty-three thousand, the first item on page three, tuition revenue. And as you recall, I've reported earlier that, that our tuition student enrollment is down from what we expected this year. And you can see that I've also made a lower projection for fiscal year fourteen. And that's, that's based on numbers that, that, you know, will fluctuate right up until the, the new year begins. But if you are interested, you could go to page eighteen of this handout, and that identifies the assumptions by town. So, we have, we have the towns of Athens, Crafton, Dover, London, Derry, Marlborough, Stratton, Winthall, and Wordsboro, and those are the assumptions behind current enrollment, who's graduating, and who we, who we estimate enrolling in next September. And on the following page is the basis of deriving a tuition rate, and this board has been supporting the maximum allowable rate to be calculated and then used for budget. So, I've continued with that, which essentially takes all our spending, but it removes, on page nineteen, it removes some of the revenues, federal revenues and subsidies that prevents the school district from making a profit. You know, we can't, can't make profit when we assess regular education tuition. We also have a capital plan updated, and I think that's the last thing I'll mention, and then turn it over to Durin. But on page seventeen, that's a five-year capital plan, and the, the new item for fiscal year fourteen is, in nineteen ninety-two, so is that twenty years ago, when we did the woodchip system? We also brought in a very good control system. It was at that time a Johnson Controls system that essentially monitors all the classrooms, the heating ventilators, the valves, and so on. That system is now going obsolete, so we're, we're having trouble wherever you see these panels on the walls replacing the, the CPU components. And so, that's, that's the most significant piece of the new investments that we need to begin making. We are going to do it in zones, so we, we will need to plug away at that for quite a while. I did report a little bit about the status of these columns where you see rust on the jackets. We have had an engineer assessing the condition of the ones that look pretty bad, and you can see that we have some reserves in there over multiple years to address that. But at this point, it appears to be mostly cosmetic and of a fire code compliance issue, not a structural issue with the I beam steel, the condition of the I beam steel.
Well, that's good.
That's very good. And we also have for two thousand fifteen, the last, the last row of windows to be replaced on the south side of the building. We've done all sides except one. So, I'll turn it over to Durin unless you had some questions for me before.
I will remind you all that we don't have a ratified contract agreement, master agreement, so we are taking into account what, what is, what is, represents our tentative agreement. But, you know, we don't want to be too specific about that because we don't have ratification. But, but I can assure the board, we've taken that into account in our budget projection. Okay, Durin?
So, for the past couple of years, I have submitted to you all the rationale for the, for the budget, and I have a directive that now, that I gave to Frank and Stephen to refer, refer to for purposes of this discussion. My intent, my plan is to distribute it to you all after we have this preliminary discussion at our next board meeting in early December, specific to that. And when I looked at past years, our special board meeting took place at different times, so that sort of goes back to, first year I was here, when I presented the budget rationale in terms of timing. There's two areas where there are reductions and a number of areas of program increases. And I'm just going to walk you through them based on, it's not in the order of how it's presented here, but again, in terms of reductions and then increases. And feel free to just ask questions because this is a working document, and I really want to tailor it to what is most pertinent to the public. So, what, because, you know, like, I'm in the forest, and you guys are looking outside, so you tell me what trees you need to see more closely. So, last year, we budgeted in the science department, five point three three full-time equivalent teachers. And what ended up happening was, and that was to accommodate the new earth science course for juniors. And what happened is that we have, we're running three sections of that course, so, but the juniors did, for the most part, did not take a second science course. So, right, so, on average, seventy-five percent of our seniors take science. So, in essence, seventy-five percent of our seniors have been doing four science credits before they graduate anyway. So, the impact that I anticipated on, from moving from five science teachers to five and a third science teachers didn't, didn't turn out that way. Luckily, we had a social studies, we had, in, in the social studies department, we had budgeted three point six seven social studies teachers. What then ended up happening is, well, basically, we have a social studies teacher who's also licensed in science, who was prepared to teach the earth science class. But then, we had added a couple of new electives just to try it out, because there were a number of under-enrolled social studies electives. So, in the program of studies, we offered two new social studies courses, military history and economics. Because of student interests, not only is, are we running economics, but two sections of military history, plus for the first time, we had two sections of psychology before it was only one section. So, suddenly, we needed four point oh social studies teachers. We budgeted for three point six seven, but basically, because we had a teacher who's certified in both, he remained full-time in the social studies department. And that's what I'm proposing for this year. So, hence, there's a decrease in science and an increase in social studies. It could be when all of the courses, the student enrollments are, are completed in April, that it, I mean, maybe I shouldn't say this on camera, but I'm just being fully honest with you, it might turn into five point three three and, and three point six seven, because suddenly, all these juniors want to double up junior year so, to make sure they're totally ready for APs the next year. But I don't expect that'll happen. I think social studies is going to stay where it is. And with the current staffing level, we're able to accommodate this, so.
But the budget's based on a plan, the best plan we can put together and project and put together is, we're familiar with that, and of course, implementation of the plan can, can vary depending on the needs of the students.
And I just wanted to also add that the first class who will be required to fulfill four science credits for graduation is our current freshman, so the class of twenty sixteen. So, it's possible, and FY sixteen, I would be asking for an increase in the science department, but there will be a lot of other factors involved then, like what's the enrollment like in seventh, eighth grade? I can't project that far out. And perhaps by then, for that class, they may be looking at doing, you know, more than four credits, so. Another program reduction is in school counseling. And we, we went from two full-time, I'll call them traditional guidance counselors, I'm not including our school social worker or SAP in this. And when one of the counselors became a half-time middle school counselor and a half-time administrator, the director of student services, that's the model we ran last year and this, well, was it last year? Well, we proposed it, and we, and we revised the budget, so it reflected that last year and this year. That is our budget plan. And what I am presenting or proposing is that that actually reduced further in school counseling from one point five school counselors to one point two five, so that the director of student services is just point two five school counselor and point seven five administrator. And the reason is, because the director of student services can straddle both roles, the level of, I'll just use the one word, authority, that, that allows in the school counseling department to manage areas that really blend both, both these roles. Overseeing the educational support system, so that's, you know, academic and emotional behavioral interventions for regular education students, overseeing attendance and truancy issues, as well as the master schedule. issues, as well as the master schedule. So those have often been, those are traditionally administrative roles, but it's been done by our director of student services and she also oversees all the unified arts teachers in terms of the supervision and evaluation process. And through much discussion, we felt that next year's, well, the proposed budget should reflect this reality. We still have a point six school social worker who provides one-on-one and group counseling. And we also have a half-time student assistant professional, so that together, that's one point one devoted just to counseling services. And the student assistance professional, always known as a substance abuse counselor, is funded from grant funds in the first year of that, of the three years of grant funding. Any questions about that? I have also a meeting scheduled with the, I don't know what his title is, from the, from HCRS, Healthcare Rehabilitation Services, to discuss the opportunity of a school-based clinician, which is an HCRS employee, as I talked about this before, as part of our memorandum of agreement, which doesn't include a school-based clinician. But we're going to begin this conversation because it would be a substantial cost savings to us to have an HCRS employee providing one-on-one and group counseling in our building. So it's just at the discussion phase. I don't know what the, right now, we have a need for increased counseling and that's immediate, so we're talking about this year. But we're having an exploratory conversation, and so I just mentioned it in my rationale and perhaps you think, that's a dumb idea, don't put it in your rationale, you're not, because it doesn't have to do with the budget. But I don't, I put it in there because I don't want you to think that in any way I am seeing a reduction of actual services in school counseling. What I'm trying to say is one of our school counselors who has been doing administrative function, wearing a school counselor hat in terms of time allocation. Feedback, questions?
Is the HCRS person going to take the place of your school-based counselor, or just there would be?
In addition to.
My idea would be in addition to.
Well, that depends on student enrollment as well. Right now, we have an increased need, so we're talking about it. Will we have the increased for next year? I'm personally just learning more about this model. Apparently, it's much more common than, what's also exciting is it's a direct conduit to broader HCRS services and a stronger partnership to collaborate in case crises emerge like we have experienced.
Before you move from counseling, just a quick question about, you know, with the reduction in the counseling employee, let's be, and with all the discussion about need, I don't, you know, with the demands in the school, I don't want to overlook, or I think it would be unfair for us to overlook, the need for kids for college counseling and that type of thing for your college counseling too. So I'm assuming you've addressed all that and you're.
So our one point oh school counselor this year and last year is the high school counselor. So that remains the same. The director of student services has only been a middle school counselor with only a handful of high school students she has been counseling, but not for college plate or career placement.
Okay, but I mean, you know, I'm still, I mean, you could draw those lines and say that, but if there's a reduction in the other area, you can't help but think that there'd be overlap maybe or something, so I'm just asking.
I don't actually see our director of student services doing anything different next year than she's doing this year. It's just that what's allocated and represented in the budget is more accurately represented.
Okay, thank you.
I'm actually putting a lot of heat on principles about that. We want to have things accounted for properly. What happens during the school year, implementation of the budget from one year to the next is based on student needs and what we hire and what happens. And so quite often, there are these corrections and actually, this is, discussions occurred at other boards as well, I'm just putting it in the context that, but the question is certainly a concern that I think Durin is trying to address adequately, that there hasn't, there isn't any change in what the services is for the high school students preparing for college. That's what you're saying, right?
Yes, that's what she said.
That's right.
And honestly, I'm not too worried about that perspective because we're so very open and transparent about our budget here, you know, that we understand that there's always ups and downs and that really doesn't concern me at all. And I, we can always speak to it, I think, as individual boards in the board.
Not mentioned in the budget, but something that may be helpful for you to know is that if we actually do have ten students from China next year, we have two this year, and when we get through the budget cycle probably in January, February, I can share with you what we're doing with our Chinese partnership schools, sister schools. And so if we do have ten students coming from next year, that would be, and as we, when we calculated the tuition, there is a fee built in that for counseling, college placement services. So that would be in addition to, and we would likely contract out for that, to work specifically with those ten kids. So it wouldn't be an undue burden for our school counselor. Okay, so program increases, there are three areas that have contributed to an increase in cost in the math department. One is purchasing additional textbooks in order to accommodate the larger classes in algebra this year and geometry next year. So we've talked a lot about these courses in the past and that we are working towards and have made progress in reducing enrollment or altogether eliminating a below-grade level math course. So that means that we have many sections of Algebra I this year. The grade range in there was actually from seven all the way to twelve. Hopefully, in the future, we won't have such upperclassmen only in Algebra I, but there's been a great need for updating our textbooks also to be in alignment with the Common Core. Next year, fall 2013, is the first year we are supposed to be implementing in the classroom teaching based on the Common Core, because the following year, that's what the assessments are based on in fall 2014. Our textbooks, one, not enough of them, and two, they're not in alignment with the Common Core State Standards, which is, I mean, it puts Algebra I in eighth grade and it really shifts the, you know, more complex mathematical coursework earlier. So that's one area that's contributing to a budget increase. The other is, we have a computer replacement plan for the whole building. And so there's a cycle of when computers are replaced. And so in the math department, that includes several of the math teachers' computers. And the third increased, the third area is that we have a mathematics teacher who's moving from a bachelor's level to a master's level, which means a salary increase. And I'm glad to then be able to have all of our, well, nearly all of our math teachers at a master's level. So any questions about math? I talked about social studies and the increase in there from three point six seven to four point oh and the reasons why. I also wanted to mention that one of our social studies teachers is acting as the academic coordinator for our sister school, Tangshan, which is two hours outside of Beijing. They approached us, learning about Leland and Gray to form a partnership with us, and they have this two-plus-one program where the students are, starting in February, they will have anywhere between fifteen to twenty students taking three Leland and Gray courses. And the ten lucky ones are going to come to our school next fall. That's the design. And it's, so one of our social studies teachers is the academic coordinator. She's going to go over there for three weeks late February to train their teachers in the three subject area, the three courses, Leland and Gray courses. So she's also, in addition, she has been helping with the Journey East program as well as the move from online learning to dual credit, so establishing partnerships with two area colleges so that our students will earn college credit in our, we're starting with foreign language courses. So that's why I'm proposing to have four point oh FTEs in social studies. In addition, we need to replace the eighth grade social studies textbook of early American history because it's twenty-six years old, so, yeah.
Got the mind for that one, sort of.
Yeah. I said to the teacher, what have you been waiting for? First time I've done that. Okay. The other areas I'll speak to very quickly because I know the night is no longer young. Foreign language, there's an increase because a teacher is moving from the master's degree to a doctoral degree level. There's also higher enrollment, as you're aware, in foreign language and we need to, we are anticipating an increase, you know, building in an increase for classroom materials as a result of the increased enrollment. And also, as part of our technology plan, we need to replace some of the computers. In the budget item of technology, so there's other machines in the building that we need to replace as part of that plan. We are also working towards modernizing our wireless network. So if you go in certain areas of A level or B level or D level, there's different Wi-Fi zones. We're trying to turn that into one zone so that there's uninterrupted service as well as much improved security. So that, those two areas, eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars. I talked about the peer tutoring center and all the stats around that. Another area of increase is professional development. I'm proposing that the, that this budget item be for sixty-seven thousand dollars. And that is for the teachers allotment through the negotiated agreement of courses and other trainings that they take, so that's a substantial portion of that. But it also goes to help pay for our literacy coach, which we're going to continue next year, as well as having our teachers as professional developers like we have had for all of the literacy across the curriculum in service and faculty meetings we've had this year. So teachers being paid for their professional time to serve in this role for colleagues. And I would, it is considered the notion of instructional coaches in the research to be the most effective model. And I would say Leland and Gray teachers are very happy with the model. We have, we will continue working with consultants as we have this year with Mahesh Sharma in mathematics. I anticipate continuing that next year and that's built into the budget, as well as continued support for science. And the whole transition to the Common Core State Standards may likely either require additional training for teachers at our school who would then come back and train the rest, or having a consultant come in and working with the full faculty. And the last piece is that, I'm just going to read this to you.
Before you get to that, this thing about coaches is actually a model that's being followed. We're following that same pattern all the elementary schools. The thinking being that if you have a colleague in the building, working with you side by side as being an expert, then there's a much greater chance of getting the kind of positive feedback and encouragement and support.
And availability.
And availability than if you have, you know, somebody who's flying in or coming in for the workshop deal. It'll be interesting to see, I mean, there's a combination of those two kinds of professional learning opportunities, but in terms of sustaining, this gives our home teachers an opportunity for growth, professional growth, that I'm very excited about and we're, the administration team is supporting this throughout the SU and all the schools. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our, the English teacher, Courtney Cron, who presented tonight, is working towards becoming a SIM professional developer. So she would actually go out to Kansas and get however long the training is, a week or so, and then she'd be able to take that back to her faculty because our current literacy coach is not like a certified SIM trainer. We had been working with someone from Waitsfield, bringing all the method stuffs, but then she would be our person. So, so board and supervisory union administration. Act one fifty-six encourage Vermont's school boards to realign their school resources and rethink their supervisory union membership. The town of Windham chose to leave the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union and join the Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union. This move will reduce the revenue to our central office beginning the 2013-14 school year. The budget increase of Leland and Gray's contribution to central office is eleven percent or twenty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-eight for a total contribution of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Your wife hurts. Questions? That's the whole, that's everything, unless I missed anything, Frank and.
No, and maybe one other thing I'll mention is enrollment, because of course, enrollment drives so much of what we do. And I did add a page, I mentioned it earlier, if you may have already noticed, page eighteen is how we look at staffing for next year. And so the bottom part of the chart, I will turn this into a graph and map it over multiple years as I normally do. But for this budget, what we look at is K through six, you see the four hundred kids in the far right-hand column on that lower schedule. And then we look at our grades here at Leland and Gray, you know, seven through twelve. We currently have fifty, three hundred fifty-two students and you can see that we're going to lose a class of fifty-four, the seniors, but we're going to receive the last class of the sixth graders. You see the sixth graders above of seventy-one. And so this is the last bump where we have a smaller class leaving as seniors, but a larger class coming in and sixth graders, becoming seventh graders. So behind that, you can see that the numbers drop by thirty students at a grade level. And, you know, if we do average, you know, somewhere around fifty students by grade level and you've got sixth grade levels, that's a three hundred student Leland and Gray as opposed to, you know, not in recent history, we're over four hundred students. So we've known this and this is the way in which we've developed a staffing proposal for fiscal year fourteen, but we certainly are aware of fiscal year fifteen and what's right around the corner, which is going to force us to look at our own grade level configurations. It certainly adds a lot of fuel to Leland and Gray's interest in being part of the regional education district, you know, when we look at grade configurations and having the elementary districts obviously struggling with the same issues of, like Stephen said, you know, a traditional classroom teacher for a class size of fifteen students is one thing, but many of our schools have class sizes of eight, you know, in the elementary grades and sometimes even less. So that's a hard, a hard transition to make when we're, you know, for how many years, thirty years accustomed to these grade level structures and having to deal with that. But I just wanted to assure you that, you know, we've taken this into account for fiscal year fourteen and the staffing plan Durin just outlined. for fiscal year fourteen, and the staffing plan during just outlined reflects that.
Okay. Comments or questions?
The number at the bottom of the first page, the fourteen thousand five hundred and fifteen per student.
Yeah.
Where does that situate us relative to other public schools in the state?
Um, well, our current rate is thirteen, uh, let's see, does somebody have the current, um, budgets? So, so I can give you an answer, um, relative to.
Thirteen five fifty?
Thirteen five fifty is the current rate, and there, and there's announced tuitions across the state of Vermont for this year. We, it's hard to know what, what the, the, the Valley, Chester, and other surrounding towns will do next year. I suspect they're all in the same boat where their, their costs are not going down, but their enrollment is, so they're gonna see the same pressure. So, um, in our area, the thirteen-five is, is a, is a pretty typical rate. There are many schools, though, in Vermont that, um, intentionally charge less than the maximum allowable. These are our maximum allowable rates, um, but, but, but many try to compete when towns have options, uh, for school choice, and they intentionally, um, charge, you know, eleven, twelve thousand dollars, much less than their cost. Um, so Bern Burton is one of our big competitions, and their rate this year is fourteen thousand five hundred. Our rate is thirteen thousand five hundred. So, um, that's, that's probably the biggest comparable that is, you know, concern. Students generally don't make decisions based on tuition rates, you know? They have no interest in that bet. Um, in, in, in our choice towns, I think it does have an effect on the parents' decision because oftentimes they pay the difference. We were just processing an invoice for, uh, Winhall, and Winhall has choice, and they, and one of the invoices was for one student at tuition to, uh, Deerfield Academy for about forty-two thousand dollars. Now, the town only pays, uh, the average announced, uh, tuition rate, um, about thirteen thousand, but, um, there's, there's, there's the other end of the spectrum.
And that, the reason why they didn't do that, pay the average tuition is that they, they, so if it's an out-of-state placement, you could, you could do that. Actually, if it's a public school, you have to pay what the public school charges. If it's a private school, some of the boards, including Dover, because of the meeting, the voters so directed, they're paying the full freight to Bern Burton or other, some other school.
Well, Bern Burton has said that, that, um, that's not their full cost, but they're, they will accept, uh, students in the certain catchment area, Winhall, Dover, Stratton, and Wardsboro. Uh, they will accept, uh, a fourteen thousand five hundred dollar tuition rate as full payment, but their, their full cost is, is well over twenty thousand. I haven't actually seen, uh, the full charge.
Yeah.
Because it, it's not in my purview to, to see that, but, um, but I know that that is a substantially discounted rate fr- from their point of view. But they also, I think, just received a five million dollar donation to their endowment, and, uh, that.
They just, they just donated a bunch of money to us. I don't know what to think about that. Something.
They have included Wardsboro in the catchment area?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and Wardsboro just recently, and for the first time, um, put an article to override the state law. So the, the state law, by default, says that a, a school board will pay the average announced union school tuition rate, which is about thirteen thousand. But Dover and Wardsboro took, took the option to, um, increase that by about thirty percent, twenty percent, and, and go with what Bern Burton was asking public schools, public school boards to do. So that's their discretion, that they can do that. But the default is, is the average announced union tuition.
So, Durrell, um, if it's possible, you know, I'm not trying to put any pressure on you, but if it's possible to email that out before the decision.
I think it'd be very helpful for the board members to review your rationale again so that they come prepared with questions.
Right.
Because even though you write it, I appreciate you doing that. I think it'd be helpful for us to have. It wouldn't need to be a long time ahead, but.
Is there any information missing?
I'm just wondering, I see with the music, you increased the music by a little, right? I mean, like, that's five points, you know, the seven thousand dollars. And then there's a decrease in the transportation on the others, in the co-pilater. What's going on there? What's, do you, do you know what's happening there? And this transportation is gone.
I'll let Frank handle that one.
Well, as I recall, there, there are two Allstate, um, festivals, and we said we would approve them all.
Oh.
So it's, uh, two events.
Or we would approve for one teacher to attend because it was budgeted previously for two teachers to attend.
And I, I also noticed.
So, so wait a minute, so that means you'd still s- typically we have a band and a chorus that participate in the Allstate, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, one teacher would go instead of two?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the reduction in that transportation? That's what that, that's, that's the reflection there? That's, that's, that's?
I think that, uh.
Well, the other thing is, Leona, if you look at page eleven.
Yeah, I am on eleven.
Okay. And you look at the fiscal year twelve actual, what actually happened? And you see under transportation for music, it's only six hundred and sixty-six dollars?
Right.
Uh, but, but they, they had budgeted, uh.
You adopted.
Similar amount of forty-nine hundred for that same year. So, so we're, we're aligning, uh, the fiscal year fourteen with, you know, it's still a lot more than what they actually did in, in fiscal year twelve.
Two years ago.
Yeah, but it's, uh, it's, it's, it's still responding to, to their request, but at
Any questions?
Yeah, you'll think of more as you look at Dover carefully between now and next meeting.
Did you, in the professional development, I was trying to follow that, that you talk a lot about the literacy coach, but this, this is, this, how do you hear?
Same page.
This is our page twelve at the bottom. The comments at the top, right?
Yeah, so the sixty-seven thousand, uh.
There's a blank with a literacy coach.
Singular line item, then we, I, I, yeah, they, we, I.
Oh, I can explain that, um, why is there a blank there? Because, uh, the literacy coach, uh, is part of a teacher's full-time equivalent. So we have five English teachers, you know, full-time people in the English department, and part of one person's job is to be the literacy coach. So she teaches one course fewer than the others each semester. And that's why it doesn't have to be in the budget here because it's already built into the English department.
But did it get, did it get added to the budget, or it's just part of, they have the time, so we're not adding time to the English department budget for them to be able to do that? I mean, is that, is that then reflected by the increase in the English department budget there?
It hasn't been because, uh, when I first came here, um, the middle school core teachers had an additional planning period more than the high school teachers. And when we restructured so that the schedules were aligned, allowing middle school teachers to teach more easily in high school, more flexibly, uh, we didn't include that with English. So we just, we just kept that, those two, basically two teachers, two periods, which equal a block each semester, and that being when the literacy coach is available to do that, the English teacher is available to be a literacy coach.
So generally, another, another way to say that is, um, so the, the activities being sustained, as Durrell just said, but in terms of the funding, um, we have that asterisk down at the bottom, you see?
Yeah.
And if you go to page three, um, you, it, it's really just a funding, um, format in the way in which it's being presented. But on page three, you see consolidated federal grants going from seventy-nine thousand to a hundred and two thousand.
Yep.
So, so that's where the, the funding is, is here on page three, whereas, uh, in the, in the fiscal year thirteen.
Right.
It evolved after we had put this budget together. So it, the, the effort is there, there is no, there's really no increase in net costs to the, to Leland and Gray because we're receiving more funding to sustain it. Um, but, but what, what we're not doing is, see, we, we had a forty-four thousand dollar plan, you see on page, on page twelve, um, and then, and then the RIN brought in, uh, significant more initiatives subsequent to the budget. But of course, we brought in these other sources of revenues to fund that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, this year, we're saying, uh, we have a, we have a comprehensive plan, it's cost of sixty-seven thousand, and we, we are funding it, um, and those funding resources are stated on page three.
So because there's a, almost twenty-three thousand dollar increase in that line item, but that's because last year you were able to fund it through grant money, and now you're trying to sustain it with that grant money?
Yes.
So that's, that's leading to that twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars?
That's, that's right. That grant money is sustaining that activity.
And the, and I didn't hear you specifically, there's a twenty thousand dollar line item for math and science consultant?
Mm-hmm.
And was that, was that related to the Common Core change?
For math, yes.
Okay.
And for science, uh, last year and this year, uh, last year was about curriculum alignment with the Vermont State Standards, um, and this year it's a, uh, that continues as well as, um, in, instructional methods. I haven't contracted yet with the, um, science consultant, um, and with the change in the science scores, I, I think we're in certainly much better shape than we were before, but I'm certainly in close communication with them. The, the math, um, expense, uh, for the consultant is quite high, and, uh, so in terms of, like, the thousand dollars we've put in for this year is, you know, perhaps laughable.
Right.
Compared to what it really costs.
Any questions here?
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, just one quick comment about this. We all sit here at this table, and we have no clue how many hours just went into that. But I do have a sense of it, and I know all of you, it just, it helps to, I think we should just be saying things because this is a pretty big deal for every one of you, and I really do appreciate the efforts that you all put into it. It's a challenge every year, I know.
How many budgets is that, Frank?
Yeah, Frank, I mean, is it?
There's thirteen budgets in our SU, and everybody wants to usually look at a couple of versions at least, so.
No, no, no. How many budgets is it that you have prepared for us?
Oh, over the years.
Yeah. I thought you were dating this element.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you?
Something.
It's getting easier.
Okay.
You got it, Sam. Oh, right.
I wish it would get easier, but it.
It doesn't get easier, but it does speak to why, why this red is such a, wouldn't it be interesting to be able to have one budget over the five?
Hmm. Twenty years ago, did you have a computer?
Uh, it was one of those floppy disk computers?
Oh, wow.
The big ones?
Make a candy or something.
Right, that's right. They were.
Wow.
All right, well, thanks. So I guess we, what happened to our residency hearing?
Well, it, we still have to convene it.
Okay.
And all that, but, uh, I don't see a resident here, right?
So they get some to be here, so.
You did, you did tell me they thought they were gonna come.
I met with them yesterday, and I said they'd be here.
Okay, well, well, we can proceed then. Well, first we'll do bills and pay orders.
Yes, of course.
Somebody request?
I have questions.
Oh, okay.
Frank? That's why you're reading.
Actually, why don't we, uh, well, are you, is it really?
We have to turn it off.
I'd like to get a motion on the table before you ask questions, I guess, more than anything. Unless it's just a quick.
There's things missing.
I have some things.
Oh, okay. Okay.
A few invoices here that I have no home for, and there's a couple up here that I'm missing.
Okay, so, let's see, I might have.
So I'll let you guys look at that while we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Right here, I have no home for.
While you're reviewing that.
They don't have a corresponding.
Uh, check register?
Yes.
Is everybody good with, um, consent, the sort of proving the consent agenda, which was minutes from the last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Tara.
Okay, so we can just set those aside and we'll run through our next batch.
And, um.
Yeah, I can say some.
We don't have any Ds.
You have invoice four.
We have this executive session all the time planned for negotiations, and it hasn't happened yet. It's not gonna happen tonight. But I don't want that to be interpreted to be necessarily an indication that, you know, we're losing a handle on what we thought we agreed to or anything like that. It really is a political situation and not on our side. And, uh, I've been calling every day, and, and I will continue to do so till I get the final language that we can bring to the board, as well as the association, and their membership if you're held occasion.
All right.
Approve it or don't?
Regret the delay? And we are pressing to make sure we try to get it to happen so we can actually.
Yeah, my.
Compensate our employees accurately for the calendar year. This would be very important for our, you know, financial considerations.
Yeah, yeah.
Tax wise. But, that's the latest on that.
Do we have a residency hearing? We might as well prove that.
Yes, uh, well, I mean, yep.
We could do bills and pay orders.
Okay, so, uh. Pass it around here, uh.
We expected the.
Expected the, uh, parents to be here to make their, uh, case. Let me give you a little, uh, background. Leland and Gray has rarely had a residency hearing, at least since nineteen ninety-nine. I don't think I've had one. Do you remember anything?
No, I haven't had one. And so I've enrolled here, and I've got.
However, uh, I also superintendent for Winhall, and Winhall spends seventy-five percent of its meeting time in residency hearings. I just came from Winhall, there were three stacked up there ready to go. So, uh, I, I'm going to give you a time to read this in just a moment. This is the correspondence that I notified the parent. But, uh, your responsibility in this is, when there is a question about the residency of, uh, of students, parents, uh, and family in the, in your super, in your, uh, union school district, uh, I, I have to call attention to the matter. We're obliged to report accurately about our average daily membership and about the residency of the students. This is important because of the tax rates, uh, and, uh, and the, uh, base grant funding for all of the school districts. So, um, I have been in communication with my counterpart, Linda Waite, over at Greenmount, that's Windsor, south, uh, east, no, southwest, southwest.
That makes sense.
Yes. And, uh, and, uh, I can give more details later about this, but, uh, that's one of the addresses that this, uh, this family has been known to be at. Uh, and in fact, its children came from that, uh, school district, um, prior to coming here to Leland and Gray. It does. Now, your responsibility would be to hear the parent document, present documentation and evidence that they actually and truly reside in one of the, uh, member towns of Leland and Gray Union School District. Uh, in this case, uh, they have a mailing address in Jamaica. They actually had presented a lease agreement, uh, that expired in October fifteenth of this year. Uh, they presented this last spring to our registrar, to Mary Martin, and when, when they were enrolling the students at Leland and Gray. Uh, I have, anyway, so I, I guess, I'll have to read the rest of this. I presented this letter to them, we mailed it to all three addresses, then we presented the letter, I think, by hand. You know, just went.
Uh, we were.
But you did talk with the parent, uh, earlier.
Yes, with the parent on Monday.
One day.
Yes.
Directly.
We were unable to give it by hand.
So I'm satisfied that they're notified, notified on this. This is one of the due process obligations. And then their obligation is to come here to, to make their case that they truly reside, still reside, they reside, have always resided at this Townsend address or anywhere in this, you know, school district would be okay. If they're outside the school district, then our obligation is to, uh, uh, call their attention and pay tuition. Now, you can consider the facts of the case. It's strange not to have them here, but, uh, you, you, you do need to proceed and notify them of, uh, your decision, uh, based on the lack of evidence, presumably, and, uh, or, or what evidence you can. your decision based on the lack of evidence presumably and, or what evidence you can obtain from Durin and myself. And then they have a right to appeal to the Commissioner of Education. All residency cases and decisions by school boards can be appealed to the Commissioner. The Commissioner will assign a legal counsel, one of the members of his legal team, and then a, a hearing would be scheduled. And then either party can have a legal counsel represent them, that is, the board or the resident. And, but once again, the ball is in the court of the, of the parent to make the case for establishing residence.
Does the parents then give any evidence? I mean, it sounds like you've had trouble communicating.
An expired lease, right?
Yeah.
But that was given last spring, but since.
I don't know whether you had a chance to read the entire letter. If you haven't, why don't you take a moment? But I did, you don't need to read the law particularly, it goes on and on a bit, but it is interesting for reference in case we're having another hearing. And you don't need to bother about a false claim. That's included primarily to make sure that the parent realizes the seriousness of the situation, you know, regarding the evidence that they will present.
I mean, you, you specifically say what, what documents should be presented to verify residency. And so my question is, have you received any of those documents?
Right, I have received nothing from them. I haven't actually been able to talk to them or contact them. They've not responded to voicemail messages on either of their cell phones nor any of the letters that have been sent, including the letter from, yeah, including the letter, you don't have a copy here, but I have a letter of, of, that Linda Waite, the superintendent of the other SU, sent to the, the parents, the same family at the previous address, which is a known property that they own. I mean, they have a Chester address, which these people do own. They claim it's a non-residential property and they pay non-residential property tax on it.
On Monday, I met with one of the parents as well as the students. It was a pre-scheduled meeting when I informed them, you know, asked about if they had received the letter, a letter from either superintendent. And he shared that he had not received it, but that he had received notice that a letter was waiting for him at the post office. It was the father who came, but he had yet to pick it up. And I explained the contents of the letter. At that point, we also gave a copy of the letter from the Linda Waite, the other superintendent from, I mean, what is it, Windsor Southwest. Windsor Southwest. And I wrote down their contact information for both Ms. Waite and Stephen. Wrote down the date, time, place of this meeting tonight as the venue in which an appeal can be made directly to the board. And the father said that he would be here tonight. But I said at that meeting that the students were Green Mountain Union High School students and that they could not attend Leland Gray. So that's why they have not been to school here this week. I called the principal at Greenmount and informed them, informed him of their arrival and expected them to go pretty much directly there. And the students had attended there before and were talking about it, about returning there at the meeting.
So you think that's why they didn't show up today?
Yeah, that would be one, one conclusion. I know that this letter from, just read a paragraph from Linda Waite, the superintendent there back on October twenty-third, has come to my attention that you are a resident of Chester, Vermont, yet your children, I won't mention the names specifically here, are attending Leland and Gray in Townsend, Vermont. In order for your children to continue to be enrolled at Leland Gray, you must provide satisfactory proof of residency, Superintendent John. So, you know, we've been trying to follow through in a, in a respectful and appropriate manner. And I would suggest that since you, the party is not here to present documentation and has been given opportunity to do so and has yet to present anything that would establish residency, that I leaned up to your unconscious about how to move forward, but one option is to deny residency or at least in the absence of proof, assume that they are still residing in Chester, Vermont.
So is that, is that a motion? Would be a motion either way?
Uh, well, you, well, you would have a motion to make a decision that you, that you either accept them as residents of Townsend, Vermont on three, three, eight, eight, seven, State, what is it, State Forest, State Forest Road. That's what the, the lease said. I was going to say, I attempted to contact owners, did I say this? And I couldn't get any response from the owner of that property. Also, the other mailing address they have in Jamaica is owned by a parent, there's a resident who may be a relative or some friend. And that was supposedly the most dependable way to get mail to them. But the owner of that property has no familiarity with this name or this family, even though it's listed as the mailing address.
Can I ask you a question? So the decision, you made a decision and we're, and then we have to rule? This was an appeal hearing, but since they're not here to appeal, do we even have to rule?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, maybe I'm saying an appeal hearing. It's a residency hearing. The appeal would be subsequent to your decision if you chose not to deny.
Okay.
You're the only ones to make a decision on this.
Okay.
The administration usually tries to.
The administration already made the decision and said you're not a resident.
Well, we try to ascertain what's going on and we try to work it out with the parents. But in this case, the kids, and subsequent to the letter from Linda Waite, they, they provided no proof of residency and they continued to attend Leland Gray. That's why I had to take action with regard to a letter, because if we have students here who are attending and are out of district, they either have to pay tuition or they have to establish residency.
So conceivably, we could say, okay, we feel they aren't residents, they can't come here, but they can still show up, they can ask for an appeal, show up with the correct information.
That's right. So while they could ask for an appeal, they could appeal the decision of the board.
Right.
In fact, they could pay tuition if they had.
And, and where do they go while the appeals being rejected?
They would be here. Yeah, they, they have a right to be where the parent claims they should be until it goes through the whole appeal process.
And I assume they're beyond the opportunity of being like in the percentage of school choice, you can choose whoever you prefer.
So one is a middle school student in a town where they don't have school choice?
Yeah.
So that's not possible?
That's possible for kids in Athens, for example, but not in Chester, middle school level. Now, the high school, that, that could happen. They could do choice at the high school, but they have to go through the, you know, process of filing with their, their home school as well as ours. And I, there'd be no reason for my counterpart, Superintendent Waite, to, to do anything but work out what's best for these kids.
Yeah.
That's what all the communication's been about.
Okay.
But it, we, you know, it's, it's difficult to, to count on what you can get from the parent through the communication, so.
And the Jamaica Town Office can't give you any information, I guess?
Well, that's how I got the owner and the phone number and all that stuff.
Oh, but they can't.
It's public record.
Tax bill.
Tax, tax.
Right, he's done quite a bit of research.
Tax records are public.
Oh, okay.
Not, you know, and now, income tax is not public.
Yeah.
But, but in fact, you can fly, you can redact the amounts on the income tax and it can be a very convincing piece of evidence regarding where you're resident. And so, yeah. Well, I don't, yeah, I'm open to the questions about specifics pertaining to this case.
I could say that I'm remembering correctly, when the students were enrolled, we had to ask for more documentation, that what was initially provided was not sufficient and that's when came the rental of lease that, right, that expired. And so it was something we really pushed for. It's not that when they were registered that we had the property tax showing as their primary residence or, or something of equal value to demonstrate residency. So it had been a question for us for quite some time.
Well, yeah, let's, we wouldn't question people ordinarily if they show up at the bus stop at the right place and they are, you know, the parents, there's evidence that they're actually at the, at the building. And that's the problem. And in fact, from conversations casually in, in the school, it's apparent that the kids don't really live there. So that's why I'm obliged to follow through.
I make a motion that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still confused, but so we, we make a motion to deny residence?
To deny residence.
You say in lieu of, in lieu of documentation to establish residency, we consider these of the family to be not residents of our school district.
That's what I was gonna say. Exactly.
Okay, there's, there's a motion and a second. Tara, could you just read that back to us? I want to make sure you.
Yeah, we may change it, but go ahead.
Um, in lieu of documentation, I want to say establishing residency, we said we, which doesn't.
The board.
The board considers the family not to be residents of the school district.
All right. That's it.
Okay. That's reasonable.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Beyond what we've already talked about?
I think in lieu of the makes sense though.
In the absence of.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that was the word I was thinking.
Thanks, Tara.
This was their first year in the school?
They started last spring, late last spring.
I'd love to see them come here, but.
Well, we do have school choice, bring them and all that sort of thing.
Yeah, there, there are plenty ways this could work out, but it's.
It just goes through the proper channels.
You have to do it right because I, I, we can't, between the other supervising and ourselves, we can't be claiming the same students for ABM.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Any abstentions? A motion passes?
Thank you, I don't want to prolong the issue, but apart from that hearing and decision, I wanted to let you know that this underscores the difficulty we have in Vermont of our funding based on a per head on an individual student basis and our obligation to make a distinction between this side or that side of some property line in the state. It's, it's really lamentable at, at the very least. And it really is, is not, I think, a proper way to provide public education for, for the benefit of all our students. But it is what we have for the law. And I would, I say tongue in cheek to some degree, but if we're going to continue to have our administrators and our superintendents spend time on these issues of residency as they are legally obliged to do, then we probably need to establish not a Federal Bureau of Investigation, but a Vermont residency Bureau of Education, you know, Vermont Bureau of Residential Investigation. I mean, it's ridiculous. But.
We, we don't get them here very often, but they certainly do have plenty of other places.
They have.
Yeah, I mean, Dover has one. We have, we didn't do bills and pay orders, is that correct? Is that fixed?
It is.
So I need the sheet. It's on the top, probably of the. And while he's ripping it, I just want to make mention, our next meeting, of course, is December fourth here. We'll get our, we'll get the budget rationale just before that. The Tuesday, the Wyndham Central Board on Tuesday, November twenty-seventh. Bruce, you can make that one and Joe, you can make that one because it's real important. We speak broad with bare minimums of per, we, we didn't have a quorum at our last meeting. So I want to make sure we're, at least Leland Gray is well represented. Red committee. And then our next regular meeting is the eleventh and that is when we would take action on our budget.
Is this preliminary budget a public document of this fund?
Yeah, everything.
Not the notes that I presented.
Not the notes, but the, the numbers that.
Yeah, we can't present anything at a board meeting without it being public, unless we're in executive session regarding negotiation.
The minutes with the discussion.
Totally hush, hush, nobody knows.
But I mean, it should be, you know, I don't know what, where it would be, you know, put out there, but it should be just noted clearly that this is still a draft. That's all. Okay, so we have, oh, general fund, I'm not going to read all these. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, eight general fund warrants for four hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred forty dollars and eight cents. And we have five payrolls for three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred two dollars and thirteen cents. Total warrants and payrolls are eight hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the movement seconded. You had corrections on here? Is there anything you need to mention or?
Okay, so.
Just a little.
Yeah, just organizational of the records here. It was a big batch and a couple of invoices got separated from the batch and.
That's easy to do.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So if there's no comments or questions from two of you, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion passes.
I just wanted to commend the parents and all the people involved with the crucible. We can pass this around, this was really amazingly convincing.
I don't know if anybody saw just the.
Portrayal and so forth. Anyway, because it's a very serious, this is not the same as doing musical or something.
No, it's a tough one.
Anyway, it's, it is extremely well done and I certainly.
Thanks for mentioning that, Stephen, it's great.
So proud of the students who participated in that. And you know, Jesse was the lead and just played.
Well, congratulations.
Eddie was in it. Lots of people in it, but it was.
Really tough.
I tell you, I haven't, I just saw it four times and I just got so depressed. I really, I couldn't sleep.
Some very dark ones.
I was waking up and it was so dark, you know.
Frankenstein was dark. Karen Hanks, four, five, one.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Very dark. I'd like a nice romantic comedy.
Coming up, coming up.
Well, we have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Yes.
But what happened to yourself as a result of crucibles? That's your, your do of seriousness for all year. She really missed so many, so many lessons. Crucible itself is a lesson.
Yes.
And so. Evolved that.
Yeah. Frankenstein is so.